16, 2022. Please rise for the...
I was gonna say singing the national anthem. We're going pledge of allegiance. So, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is spanned, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Flynn?
Here.
Mr. Reichman?
Here.
Mr. Etter?
Here.
Mr. Kessler?
Here.
Ms. Fields?
Here.
Anyone would like the motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
Was it Todd? Did you say?
Yeah, sorry. I'm sorry.
So, you might need to call your names for a little bit so we get...
Sure.
So Kelly learns all your names.
Well, we do have placards here.
Okay. Sometimes you guys speak so softly we can't even hear it.
Okay.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Reichman?
Yes.
Mr. Etter?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Someone like to approve of the minutes of the regular meeting for March 16, 2022?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from March 16, 2022?
I will second. Todd?
Thank you. Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Reichman?
Yes.
Mr. Etter?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Epstein, I was not here.
And Ms. Fields?
I'm trying to remember if I was there or not. Was I there?
Yeah, you were there.
Okay. Yes.
Did you see them?
Approved. Yeah.
So, at this time, we'd like to open up the public hearings. And just for everyone's edification, we will first, for each case, we will first hear from staff, we will then hear from the applicant, we will then hear from the members of the audience, and we'll start with those who are proponents of the application. We will hear from opponents of the application, and then anyone from a neutral side. So, that's our procedure. Once we close the public hearing, we are not going to take any questions, comments from the public at that point. So, with that, we'll open up the meeting and start with Sims case number 2022-03, Coles Out parcel. Could we hear from staff?
Mr. Chair, I beg your pardon in procedure. I'm Matt Fellerhoff, I'm an attorney. I'm just trying to make sure I understand the procedure. Is this being treated as a record hearing where people will be sworn in, or is this just a public hearing where people are presenting evidence?
It's a public hearing and you'll present evidence.
So, there will be no swearing in?
We are not swearing in people tonight.
Okay.
We expect people to tell the truth.
Well, I have a question.
Can I go ahead and get started? Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
Thank you. This is a zone change request, and as laid out by state law, zone change requests are required to follow a procedure. That includes a public meeting with the Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission, a public hearing with the Sims Township Zoning Commission, that is tonight's meeting, for a recommendation to the Sims Township trustees. The Sims Township Zoning Commission is not a quasi judicial board, and therefore there is no swearing in of witnesses at these hearings. This is not a final decision, this is a recommendation to the Sims Township trustees on this matter. This is a zone change request that is called a major revision. They are not actually changing the zoning from double E to another district, it stays double E. However, the legislative authority, in this case, the Sims Township trustees, approved a resolution as part of Sims case 2000-1 that included conditions that limited the number of buildings on the site. Those buildings would be exceeded with the addition of another building that would violate that condition of approval. The only board that has the authority to change the conditions of approval are the Sims Township trustees, the ones that created the legislation, that created the conditions. And the only way to get a zoning request back to the Sims Township trustees is to go through the full zone change process. So, even though the zoning isn't changing, a major revision follows the full zone change process with the intent of getting back in front of the trustees to change the current resolution of approval for the current site. In this case specifically, the applicant is asking to add an additional parcel in the outlot, in an outlot that they would create, in the existing parking lot for the existing Coles store. They're proposing to allow for construction of a 4,800 square foot commercial building. It does show a drive-through, dumpsters, landscape, bylin, signage, the typical concept plan submission. This is not the final development plan. If approved by the Sims Township trustees, final development plans for all the detailed signage, landscaping, and lighting would all come back to the zoning commission for a public hearing and approval at that time of the details as part of the final development plan. So, this is the concept plan that's going through the zone change process. As I stated, the zone change process goes through a process that includes the Regional Planning Commission. Regional Planning Commission staff prepared a staff report, which you should have a copy of. This details all of the various parts of the analysis of the zone change, starting with the land use consistency. The land use plan adopted by the Sims Township trustees defines this area as general retail. The proposed retail use is and would remain consistent with the designation for general retail. In addition, there are some guiding principles in the text of the 10-year master plan that call for revitalization of underutilized properties, given that this parking lot greatly exceeds the requirements for parking for the Coles store. This is an underutilized parking lot, this is a proposal for using some of the area that is underutilized, and so staff found the development to be consistent with both the text and the map adopted by the Sims Township trustees for future land use. The Regional Planning Commission unanimously found that the development would be consistent with that plan at their meeting on May 5. Thoroughfare plan consistency was the next section in the staff report. Thoroughfare plan dedication of right-of-way is not required as part of major revisions, only as part of new zone changes. This already went through the zone change process and was subject to the dedication of right-of-way as part of that original zone change. As far as zoning, there's one zoning issue with the proposal. The rear corner of the building would be 26 feet from the rear property line, where it's required to be 50 feet. They're obviously drawing the parking, or the property line as part of this, and they're trying to have it follow the driveway out to Union Cemetery Road. In the middle of a parking lot, it's not going to be noticeable. There's separation, more than 100 feet of separation between this building and the other surrounding buildings. So, staff did not have an issue with that and supported that variance. There is no detailed landscape plan. They showed enough areas for landscaping, but landscape plans would be required as part of the final development plan if approved. Same with lighting, outdoor lighting would be required to comply with the code as part of the final development plan. The proposed plans do indicate additional wall signage on the Union Cemetery side, which is the west side of the building. They're allowed 1.5 square feet on the front facing Field Turtle and .75 on the side, since they're a corner lot and have frontage on two streets. They're proposing 1.5 on both sides, so they're asking for twice the permitted signage on the west facade. Staff did not support that request and recommends that they submit a detailed signage plan in compliance with the code as part of the final development plan. Two other issues. There's a landscaping plan for the existing Coles site that includes a streetscape requirement along Field Turtle Road specifically. Some of that landscaping appears to have died, been removed, and not replaced. Staff was pointing out that that is required regardless of this zone change. If this were denied, that would still be required, it could be handled through enforcement issues. We're bringing it up here to reinforce that it's going to be required regardless of the outcome of this case. And then we have a section on parking that just goes over the parking numbers to point out that there is sufficient parking for both the Coles and the new outlot with still an excess of parking. So, with that, staff recommended approval with three conditions and one variance for the rear setback. As I stated, the Regional Planning Commission had a meeting on May 5. They unanimously recommended approval of the zone change with the three conditions and the variance as outlined in the staff report, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
We could probably hold questions to you until we hear from the applicant, but thank you very much for the report and clarifying how we structure our meeting.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. May we hear from the applicant? Please state your name and your address.
Greg Malone with Casco, 250 Civic Center Drive, Columbus. Could you go put the site plan back up? Thank you. So, the area that's shaded in gray is the entire parcel. That has been occupied by Coles for over 27 years. We've worked with Coles for about three years to try to be more efficient in the use of the property. They've agreed that that parking has not been used by them, it's not going to be used by them, we haven't used the parking, and so we have an agreement with them. Coles has control of the entire parcel in shaded in gray for more than 20 more years, but we do have an agreement with them that will allow this to be repurposed and a more efficient use put in place. We thank the staff for their work, we agree with all of their comments. The landscaping that he's referring to is where it says "Existing Coles Monument" sign up along Field Turtle Road to the left or west of that. There is a large area there. I mean, since we purchased this property back in 2016, the landscaping wasn't there at the time, but we don't have any objection in bringing that back into compliance. I think Nathan was going to send me a copy of the plan, the landscape plan that was approved. So, when we get that, we'll bring that back into compliance. I can't read it. Okay. He thought he had a larger plan. I'll circle back to him, and then I'll answer any questions you might have, but we're in agreement with staff's recommendations.
So, I'm a little confused because in my packet, I have a site plan that does not show a drive-through, and this has a drive-through. So, what is the real plan?
This is not the plan that was presented to Regional Planning Commission, it's been updated. This was a plan that we had a preliminary meeting here in February, and that was a plan that we used, and then that was prior to the application. On the official application, there isn't a drive-through.
Okay, so we should technically disregard this plan and concentrate on the plan that we have in our packets, which does not show a drive-through?
The parcel configuration is the same, so the 1.3 acres, the location, the dimensions, they're all the same. And, you know, this is a zone change. When we have a final user, as Brian indicated, we'll come back in with a final development plan with all the details, but we don't have a use with a drive-through at this time.
Okay. All right. I'm going to check with... I have a question for staff, but we'll see if anybody else has any questions for the applicant at this point.
So, is the intended use here like a fast food restaurant or something like that that would have a drive-through?
Post-pandemic, almost every business has, you know, they have multiple ways to deliver business. They have online business, they have pickup business, they have walk-in business, they have drive-through business, and it really just depends on the use. But most, I mean, most of the businesses today, post-pandemic, they have all four of those to be successful.
Okay, but you don't have a...
We don't have someone identified. When we started this, we did have a user identified, and they have not pursued it to a point where they're ready to transact. Nope. Standard retail business, yeah, 3,400, 3,500 feet of a freestanding retail business.
So, who's responsible for the landscaping? Casco or Coles?
The... On the entire parcel today...
Yeah, whatever you guys control, who's responsible for it?
Since there hasn't been any change, I mean, it was, I guess, we will take the obligation of putting it back in.
But who's responsible for it today?
The landlord maintains it. The landlord maintains...
That's you, correct.
That is us. That is correct.
One of the issues that I'm having with this whole area is we keep doing these little rezonies here and there, and it's piecing together, and as I drive by this week, the landscaping is awful, just terrible. It's not maintained, it's not trimmed, it's not... It just looks, and it's Field Turtle, this is where we go, and it's disappointing when I see that, then you come and ask for something, but you can't maintain what you're currently exposed to.
I think we, you know, we do, we manage 22 million feet of property, and I think we, you know, we deliver a commercial standard of service and maintenance. If you have a specific, you have a specific item, there is no landscaping on, again, on the west side of the signal, I went out there and confirmed it, and again, I don't know what happened to it, don't know when it was put in, when it was taken out, but if there are other landscaping issues, I mean, that you have, we'll be happy to address them.
I guess I'm just saying, it'd be great if I just like stewards of the property, so I'm saying, I realize you have a lot of property, but this is where we live, and it just makes a difference. That's just a comment, it's rhetorical.
Does anybody else have any questions for the applicant at this time? Thank you, Greg. We might call you back for additional questions.
Thank you.
Is there anybody here would like to speak on, as a proponent of the application? Anyone as a proponent? Anyone would like to speak in opposition of the application? Please state your name and address, sir.
Okay. The board is, I've already stated my name, and again, I apologize for the...
Can you just do it again?
My name is Matthew Fellerhoff, I'm an attorney at Strauss Troy. I represent the neighboring property owner. The property is owned in a trusteeship owned by Raymond Kahn, but it's where the Burger King is, if the board understands. And again, I apologize for interrupting, I just need to understand and make sure what procedure we were following.
We're beyond that, but go ahead, Matthew.
Okay. My client is the nearest neighbor to this property, the most adjacent building to this property. My client wasn't consulted about this plan, and the confusion, which I recognize, and my client pointed out to me that this board recognized immediately, is one of the reasons for our concern about this proposal. Originally, there was a plan that was submitted with a drive-through. Since in midstream, all of a sudden, the drive-through was removed, there are concerns that my client has about the drive-through, and I'll address that. But it highlights the fact that if this board approves a preliminary plan, what happens in the, without knowing what is going to be on this property, it has limited control once that approval is made to what happens when the final plan is submitted. And I can address that. I can say this, in other instances, I have seen very general plans submitted for approval with an idea of not knowing what's going to be there, and within a number of weeks after the approval, the final plan is submitted, and it's very clear that that final plan had been prepared and everything else, and then we are faced with an argument that this board has already approved the location of this, when it doesn't know what's going to be there. And at that point, the board's hands are tied as far as what it can control, as far as what goes on the property. My client's concern is, this is a large Coles property. Apparently, the testimony is that, or the explanation was that there's underutilized parking on the property. The only reason, the only place that the property owner feels it can put this restaurant, or whatever it's going to be, is immediately adjacent to my client, creating a significant potential of conflicts as far as traffic and parking. And my client is very concerned about that. There is a very large parcel there. This outlot can be located in many locations on that parcel. But because Coles, just the tenant, who's paying the property owner money, because they objected to it anywhere else, it gets slammed up against my client, so my client, who's the neighboring property owner, is going to be stuck with the result of this and have to deal with the inconveniences of this. The previous plan approved a certain number of buildings. It was a limit on the certain number of buildings. Thought was put into that, why that certain number of buildings was put in there, and the property has worked with good planning. To put this building here is going to be, have a detrimental effect on my client, and that's a concern. And this board does not know what's going to eventually be in there. And though it appears that a potential drive-through has been removed and changed, that a drive-through could come in the future. There is no entitlement for this property owner to this zone change. It's totally up to this board, and this board can put whatever conditions it wants to on this zone change, but it doesn't have to approve this zone change. This board can wait for a more detailed submission before it considers approval of the zone change.
Well, just to be clear, we're a recommending board.
Well, again, and I thank you for correcting me, but this board's recommendation is important, and presumably, this board's recommendation is considered by the trustees.
We like to think we're important, thank you.
And I apologize for that, but I say that, I overstated your powers probably because I consider, well, obviously, it's important. So, the concern is that without knowing enough about this, that this, the board and the township is going to be hamstrung by its decision. And I'm going to, well, I'll come back to this. My client, something that has not been considered, there's discussion in the staff report about parking spaces. Those are my client's parking spaces also. My client was not consulted about this. According to, and if for the benefit of this commission, the declarations that were signed between the property owners, my client is entitled to use every parking space on the Coles property. That's their, my client's parking spaces as much as the Coles property. And so, if allotments are made for usage between Coles and whatever this user is going to be, consideration must be made to, for my client's ability to use those parking spaces adjacent to that. And if the commission would like to have a copy of these, I'd be happy to submit.
Well, I have two questions. One is, has it been recorded?
It has.
And has staff had a chance to review it?
I don't know if staff believes that it was relevant to their consideration, but I certainly can ask staff if that's...
We'll ask staff that question in a minute, but I just wanted to know if you were aware of that. And I'm assuming the declaration is like most of them, that you have rights to their parking field and they have rights to your parking field, is that correct?
Generally, yes, that's correct.
Well, is it or is it not?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
It's obviously more detailed than that, but yes.
Yeah, okay. I'm just, we're just trying to get some understanding for the board here, that's all.
This board, and eventually the township, is required under the statute to consider the effect of this zone change on the neighboring property owner. It's also required to consider the effect of this zone change on the transportation patterns on the public streets, but also on the private streets, the parking lot there. We don't feel that there has been any consideration of the effect of this project, whatever it is in the end, we've seen drive-through and not drive-through, on my clients. And I'm just going to give you the example. Consider the fact, if a drive-through comes in next to my client, my client also has a drive-through. It would have to be coordinated, the way these, the cars operate. My clients have, users have the ability to use the parking on that parcel. Just as a recent example, imagine a Chick-fil-A coming in to that property right there. Is that appropriate and good planning to have two drive-throughs immediately adjacent to each other, particularly if you've got a situation, that's an extreme example, but I presume this board is familiar with what happens at a Chick-fil-A at certain hours of the day? It would be better if there is underutilized property on this parcel to locate it to the eastern edge of that parcel. It would remove the same amount of parking, but it wouldn't create these interactionary problems that we have here.
Your answer is somewhat anecdotal in a way, but let me ask you the question.
Sure.
This area, has it been utilized constantly with parking?
I can, I actually want to make sure this answer is correct. Mr. Kahn, my client, is here.
Would he like to speak? Because he has to...
Well, he was going to speak, but I want to make sure I answer correctly, and I don't...
Okay, you can ask him.
Okay.
So, you're answering your attorney, sir, but if you want to answer...
Please come on up here.
If you want to address the board, you have to, you have to...
And state your name.
Give us your name and address, please.
My name is Ray Kahn, okay? I live at 10410 Wild Road, okay? My office is 11160 Kenwood Road, so that's the corporate.
Thank you.
The property is actually owned by a foundation, a family foundation, okay, which I'm over that foundation.
Okay, thank you.
The issues, we've been here for 30 years, roughly. We were there before the Coles was there, if I'm not mistaken, and when it was all being developed. And, you know, we've all peacefully worked with one another. I've watched the changes that you've made to the parcel, and I've never had an objection to any of it, or had any reason to be concerned about it, because I felt that our property was protected by changes to the PUD or the bill. The issue is that we don't know what happens in the future. I'm very concerned about the future and changes. I have had people come to me wanting to use this parcel for different things, because food is in a difficult setting, as the previous people are saying, food's in a difficult time, for automotive things, so I'm just saying that it to...
And I don't want to interrupt you, and you certainly consented, but he asked a question, I want to make sure we get to it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Let me make his comments.
Right now, the use, we're fine. In the future, no, depending on our use, because a new use by us, which we've been there for 30 years and are contemplating potential, would need the parking immediately adjacent. For us to have to use parking or things going through another building, a new out parcel would be quite problematic, so it's the unknown.
Okay, but my question was, is this area, have, in your 30 years, have you seen this utilized for parking in a big way, or not?
I think that the expanse of parking is underutilized. I think the areas immediately by our facility is utilized, including some of the overflow into the other lot. into the other lot, yes.
Okay, so you're saying, there has been a lot of cars in the area that, that is in question?
Can I ask a follow-up question?
I'm just trying to say that the big expanse of parking, I would not say is being fully utilized. That wouldn't be a fair thing for me to say.
Okay, but my question is, is just, this section that we're talking about right here, has that been full parks?
No, not to, not to my knowledge, but the immediate border to my parking has been being utilized.
Okay.
There is overflow, there is use, and there's potential for more use.
Okay.
So that's, that's all.
That, that was my question.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. Now, hang on a second, because we have another question from our, a board member. So if you'd wait just a second, Liz?
Yeah, it's a follow-up to yours. I just looked at, at the Google image of your property. It looks like there's approximately 43 parking spaces on your property. I would be surprised if at any time, there's more than 40 cars at a Burger King, but I might be wrong. I mean, is that, is that common? Like, I'm not sure what the high-peak demand is.
Let's put it this way, there were times when it was used. Right now, currently, that is, I think the 43 has been adequate. There are other things that go on, and sometimes we have something, but no, we're not under the current use exactly like we are, we're not under serious duress.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your answers.
Right.
Do you like additional comments, Mr. Fellerhoff?
Yes, and I'll, I'll try to be, try to be brief.
Okay.
Again, this, this, this body is responsible for considering the effect on neighboring property owners and the effect on traffic. I don't think it's been considered, not just because, you know, it, this body is not governed simply by the letter of the code, but it has to, because this is a change, and a zone change, and a change of something that was already determined, it should consider all of the effects. There is ample property on this large parcel to put an outlot. Why does it have to be immediately adjacent to my client's property, particularly considering the fact that it may prevent, prepare, or present a use that is, would potentially conflict with the current use, and could potentially conflict with future uses that we might have because of my client's right to use the, the parking on the larger parcel? Because of that, we ask that the application be denied. If they come, if they come back with a more specific plan, it could be considered. But at this point, there's not enough information. In fact, there were two plans that were submitted, conceptual plans, but we don't know what it's going to be. And to do that with the potential impact on my client's property, I, I think isn't appropriate, isn't appropriate and isn't good planning. If this board approves it, I ask that this board puts specific restrictions on this property, particularly because of the concerns about the drive-through, that this may, may not be a property with a drive-through, that a drive-through not be included because of the potential of conflict between two drive-throughs so immediately available. There is other property on this parcel where they could put, put this. And, and again, I, I want this board to understand that if there is parking that is dedicated to my, to this parcel and consider, considered, on an issue of an overflow, excessive, major use of the Burger King property, or if this property is redeveloped, my client has the ability to count parking on the Kohl's property as parking for its parcel. And to not be able to use that, because obviously, the parking closest to my client's property is the most valuable for it and the most useful.
Right, but you could use the Kohl's property, right?
Well, I could, but I, we're asking that, since there is so much room on the Kohl's property, that my client's customers not be required to walk, you know, another 300 yards when there's parking immediately adjacent.
Right, but technically, per your agreement, I'm going to assume, and you clarify, that you could use the Kohl's parking field, your client's, your customers'.
Well, we, we can use, we can use the, the parking on the parcel that's, that's subject to approval tonight. That's, that's our parking.
And, and the Kohl's?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, I just, that was just a question.
It's a matter of the location of the building. If that building's there, it's going to be less parking near my client's property that's available.
Got it.
And I just want to ask my client if there's anything else he would like me to say. And with that, we, we, we ask you.
Does, does, Mr. Khan, do you have any additional comments at this point? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here that would also like to make comments in opposition of the application? Is there anyone here that would like to make comments that are neutral to this application? Having seen none, we will now close the public hearing, and we will allow our board to ask questions.
I have a clarifying question.
Of staff and anyone else? Go ahead.
I just want to clarify that we're approving the addition of a building, we're not approving a constant plan with or without a drive-through.
No, you are being requested to make a recommendation on a proposed 4,800 square-foot retail building on a new outlot in the out parcel of the Kohl's development.
Without a drive-through?
With or without. There is no, right now, staff didn't recommend any conditions related to any drive-through. In consideration of that, which we did look at, because these issues were brought up at the staff review conference that we had before this whole process started, it was staff's position that there are 43, 45 parking spaces on the Burger King property, which is enough to support a 4,500 square-foot building, which, at restaurant capacity, which is far greater than the size of the Burger Kings, they have an excess of parking on their own parcel. They also have three access points to existing driveways, which wouldn't change, that include access to two public streets, one of them being signalized, and that wouldn't change. We honestly never considered the impact of a drive-through next to a drive-through, since most drive-through fast-food restaurants have another drive-through fast-food restaurant right next to them, as evidenced, right up the street from here. So that's no, that's nothing that we considered to be a negative. In fact, most companies think that that's a positive, I believe. That's why they try to relocate next to other fast-food restaurants with their fast-food restaurant. But regardless, no, we didn't consider that. It's consistent with your adopted land use plan, and they're meeting the requirements of the zoning resolution, they have an excess of parking. The parking easement is not something that I would review. I have no expertise in that, and honestly, we don't care what the parking agreement says. It's between the private property owner that owns Burger King and the private property owner that owns Kohl's currently. That could be litigated in court, completely separate from the zoning process, unless it was necessary for the development, which it is not on either side of that line. Staff's not concerned with that at all, either.
So, the plan is currently a 4,800 square-foot building. If we recommend approval, that plan can change, is that correct?
Correct.
And can that building be expanded?
If they could park it, yes, unless you put a maximum square-foot area on it, which we don't recommend, because if they come in with a footprint that's 4,850 square feet, they have to go through a whole zone change process to build that building. So we typically don't recommend that, but yes, it could, if they can park it.
So if we limit it to, say, 5,000 or 6,000 square feet, we could do that if we, as a recommendation, we could do that?
Sorry, yes, you can. As, based on the size of the parcel, it's probably a self-limiting condition, but.
And could we also condition it to not permit a drive-through?
You can, yes. That limits banks, Starbucks, and a number of other uses that have drive-throughs. As Mr. Malone stated, I can attest that lots of companies that didn't used to want drive-throughs are now coming back adding drive-throughs. But yes, you can.
Okay, I'm just making sure the board understands what they can and cannot do.
And with the final plan, we would get the user, and if it has a drive-through, or doesn't have a drive-through, because I, I also understand that different users have different drive-through demands. You know, a Chick-fil-A and a Starbucks have a much higher intensity of drive-through than, like, if it was, like, the drive-through Chipotle, you know? That, that's a very different thing, and so, to me, we need to evaluate at that time, when we have a user, and at this time, think about that it could be a bank, a bookstore, a jewelry store, any of these uses that are allowed in E, if they could fit on that parcel and they could park it.
Yes.
Okay.
With respect to your concerns about the signage, those will be addressed in the final development plan, is that right?
Yes, we didn't make a recommendation on a condition that limits it to the zoning resolution. If there's a trustee adopted condition limiting building signage, then you have no authority to modify it as part of the final development plan. Since we typically get those details, and there may be a scenario that's, that's appealable to the board, such as a smaller sign on the east facade in, in exchange for no sign on the north facade, or something like that, you wouldn't have the ability to approve that if there was a condition. So we typically don't recommend that condition. You'll see the full detailed signage plan as part of the final development plan.
So you don't recommend any conditions related to the signage at this point?
No.
So like, like if, if we wanted to, wanted to state no electronic leader boards as a condition, you're saying, let that go for now, and wait for the final development plan that comes before us, I guess?
Yes, if that's going before you, and typically, yes, we don't recommend specific signage conditions, unless there's something outstanding that, you know, is different for the property under consideration versus everybody else around them.
Great.
And, you know, as part of the proposed use, it talks about a new monument sign north of the proposed building along Fields Erdel at a maximum height of 10 feet, and a size of 50 square feet. Are those both the standard limits that are presently in place?
Yes. That would meet the zoning resolution, yes.
Could we make a recommendation for something that's smaller than that?
You can.
Or not approve monument sign at all?
You can, either one. The only thing I would caution is treating this potential property far differently than every other property that has a similar type of restaurant use on this block. I mean, if they walk in and say, you say we can have a drive-through, but right next door is a drive-through, right across the street are drive-throughs, right up the street are drive-throughs, why are you treating me differently? That's hard to defend. Same with signage, everybody has a freestanding sign on Fields Erdel Road, so this would be the one that wouldn't be allowed to have one.
Do you have a monument sign?
No, exactly, I did ask for it. It's like, do we have a, do we have a stand-up?
No, I think it's a pole. I wonder if.
Yeah, it's an old pylon sign.
It's a pole.
Pylon sign.
Pylon sign.
It's a non-conforming sign, it exceeds the requirements of the zoning resolution. It's non-conforming.
Okay.
Can I ask a couple questions, Brian?
So based on what you just stated, if we say no to drive-through, and other people come in later and they say they have a drive-through and this one doesn't, isn't allowed, to his argument earlier, the attorneys, I'm sorry, I forget your name, I apologize, but.
Mr. Fellerhoff.
They're exceeding the limit of buildings that were under the, that were already here, so. So you're asking this, not to do something, but asking us to do something, if I'm understanding correctly?
So in the, in the history of this, I'm not, our recommendation was to not limit the freestanding sign, because they were proposing what meets the requirements of the code, which everybody else has or exceeds on Fields Erdel Road. It's, it's the one sign permitted at the size permitted by the zoning resolution. So to not allow, we'd be basically saying that the zoning resolution isn't right, that it allows too much.
So in essence, you're saying the best thing to do is not recommend it, because there's other stipulations that everyone discussed here.
So that's why we made our recommendation. I'm not telling you what to do.
No, no, I understand, I'm just trying to hear what you're saying, Brian. And then the other question, and I'm, obviously, I'm on a landscape kick here.
If I could address the, the other part of your question, though?
Yeah, you're fine, I just.
The number of buildings thing has come up several times. The reason that there's been so many major revisions on this property is that it was standard practice many years ago to limit either the number of buildings, the square-foot area of buildings, or both. And that practice of doing that as a condition of approval has been discontinued because of the fact of the, all the major revisions and x additional zone changes that were gone through. Because of that, I can guarantee you 100% that there was no analysis of the number of buildings on Fields Erdel that was done, that led them to limit the buildings to three. I can 100% guarantee you that the reason they limited it to three was because three were proposed on the plan at the time.
Okay. And then, on page 14, you have the landscape plan, and it says approved plan on top of it. And in this plan, you circled an area along the right-of-way that Casto said that they were more than happy to replace, and they didn't know, and that's fully understandable. And I also understand your comments, that we've seen this area, this EPUD, many times since I've been here. And there's, there's been revisions along the way, and I'm just asking a question. As I look at the, what I see as approved plan, and I look at the west side of the property line, there's a line of trees that are shown on the plan, and they don't say existing, they say new. And I realize that this is a long history. Are those trees also under the same guidelines that you're stating along the right-of-way, or were they wiped out through other approvals?
They were wiped out through other approvals. As you can see, there is no grass there. All the parking lots continued and connected all the way up this stretch. I mean, so that area that was proposed as landscaping, when they built it, they were required to put that landscaping in, when the major revision happened that allowed the building next door. There was a plan that was proposed and approved that showed the parking connecting to the parking and removing that whole strip of landscaping, so yeah, that plan replaced this plan for that section.
Okay. And then, another question, and it kind of relates back to the Burger King statement of this cross-easement of parking. And as we've gone through this large parcel outside of Casto and its Longhorn, and the, it was state, what was it, Office Max and all that, and other users have come along, and I, it's Longhorn, correct? The, the restaurant there?
Yeah.
And one of the things I remember in that meeting, us talking about, was the, the shared cross-easements of parking, and how that was able to meet the guidelines that allow that Longhorn to go in there, and then when Honda came in here, they were using shared parking. And you, you make a statement in here that if we look at Kohl's, it hits, it's supposed to be, there's 444 and only, however the numbers are, they exceed the parking, but there's this cross-easements. How does that work from a zoning standpoint, if, if we're asked to say, hey, we proved this, there's cross-easement, and now we're saying, well, there's not? Or it doesn't matter in the calculations?
It does not. When we deal with the zoning calculations, we look at the individual lots. So Burger King meets its requirement, Kohl's meets its requirement, Longhorn meets its requirement. Their discussion was that they have parking outside their front door that's not on their lot, that they have access to through the agreement with Kohl's, that a lot of people will end up parking at, and that's where that discussion came from. But on their lot, they meet the requirements for parking.
So all the other users meet the requirement?
Honda meets their parking requirements on their lot.
If they need to, it's almost a neighborhood thing, a neighborly thing to do.
Right, exactly, and if you look at the property lines on here, there are parking spaces you can't access from one lot without going on to the other. I mean, that's the reason, honestly, for the shared parking and easement agreements that exist. It's not necessarily to allow somebody to park on the west side of this lot and walk all the way across to Longhorn, or the east side of this lot and walk all the way across to Burger King. It's just so that everybody can park anywhere, and nobody can come out and tow people out of the way for parking there and then walking next door to the other user.
And I would also assume that from an enforcement side, that would be next to impossible.
Yeah, we're not enforcing easement language of any kind on any parking lot anywhere.
Okay. Thank you, that's all I have, thank you very much.
Anybody have any other questions? Any discussion?
I got to say, I'm, I'm pretty uncomfortable with the idea of approving a ambiguous building that we don't know what it's, how big it is, how many, you know, what its uses are, and what its potential impact on, on its neighbor, the Burger King, is going to be. I'd like to see more clarification on what this building is before we give it any kind of approval.
Is in what respect?
Recommendation.
Yes, a recommendation.
Yeah, but, but you'd like to see what?
Oh, I'd like to see more definitive information on its intended use, and its specific signage, and its specific, you know, so, and I know that that all comes back to us, but I think to the Burger King's representative's position, I think this does have a potential negative impact on them, and I think that as a, as a commission, we need to consider the, you know, the existing uses. the, you know, the existing uses of this space and how any future uses may impact the current uses.
So it does come back to a final development plan?
It does, but I'd rather know it upfront rather than know it on the back end.
But with the zone change, you have to think about that it could be any use because even if they came to us with a bank user, we could approve a bank and that bank could drop out and per their zoning rights, they could come back in the next day with a restaurant. And we would have to approve that restaurant and look at that restaurant by its merits. But I think we need to think about, are we okay with an additional building? Not are we okay with an additional use?
Right.
Now, I'm just looking at it from, I've been asked this many times as everyone else has. I mean, it's, for lack of a better term, a little block, I mean, you have this enormous parking lot. And I'm in favor of developing an outlot, what the building is to be determined. And we can address it at that point, I guess, but as far as my opinion, I'm in favor of recommending change to allow a block of some sort in that area.
Yeah, I agree, I think anytime we can densify a very sparse, underutilized parking lot is a positive thing. It helps the economy, you know, it provides jobs, provides more, you know, places for people to go to. You know, I am a planner and I, you know, we support infill and redevelopment and I think that's always a positive thing. But I agree that I would be concerned if this was a very intense drive-through user. I would want to see that site plan and how that worked and how they were taking all that into consideration. But doubt that I'm saying it couldn't happen, I just would be, want to see how that, they were proposing that to occur.
So the odd thing about the drive-through is if the parking is a concern, typically, drive-throughs actually would help that.
Correct.
Because you actually then lower the intensification of the need for parking spots because you have a drive-through.
Correct, yeah, so it really just depends on, you know, we gotta review the user whenever they have a user.
Right, we, and it does come back before us and yes, you know, buildings get vacant, different types of users come in, you know, that's not our purview to a certain extent. I hear you, Jeff, but it's, we have to, there has to be some leeway there from that perspective. Now, you, you know, you raised some good issue, points, but from that perspective, you know, we can't specifically say, hey, I need to see what you're putting in there at this junction.
Right. So can I ask a question, George, or whomever?
Absolutely.
Are we approving an area for a building or are we approving the footprint of this building? To sort of follow up on these questions.
You're not approving either unless you try to condition it to exactly what's here. So right now, you're approving a retail building on an outlot. It's going to be about 4,800 square feet with so many parking spaces because that's what it can handle at that size, meeting the parking requirements.
And I realize this is somewhat out of the purview, but when you say the word outlet, I think of a defined area.
Well, there is a defined area.
So are we defining the area or are we saying another building within this EE zone is allowed? That's what I'm
It's one point, I don't know, I gotta find it here.
That's a parcel that would be created, you are defining that, yes.
There's a defined size, I'm sorry, I can't find it right now.
That they're proposing, and that would be included in your approval.
So, but we're just defining an area, then?
Creating a separate lot, right now, they're not allowed to have a separate lot for a separate building. Or not, right now, they wouldn't want to create a separate lot because they wouldn't be able to market it for another building.
Okay.
It has a defined lot, but
Yeah, Greg, I
Yeah, but it also, there's a reciprocal easement, parking and easement agreement with it as well, so.
So if I'm looking at development plan, I'm not, I'm really looking at what you just, I'm looking at this. That's what we're approving tonight.
That's what, basically, yeah.
And you're saying that from a procedural standpoint, the zoning has to be changed before the outlot is created for the subdivision split?
Yes.
Okay.
Before they can subdivide and replat, they have to have the property zone.
And I'm going to ask, and I apologize for this, the sign is on Fields Erle or Union Cemetery, then?
Fields Erle.
Could they put one on Union Cemetery? Since that's their lot?
I don't believe, based on their lot frontage, that there's room for them to put a sign on Union Cemetery.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other additional questions? Comments? Does anyone want to take a stab at a motion?
I'm happy to take a stab, but to be honest with you, I'm just repeating what Brian or staff recommended when you were on page five of the report.
Take a shot at it, please.
To recommend approval of case Sims 2022-03, Kohl's Outlots, request for a major revision to an existing double E-planned residence district with subservient retail subject to the standard covenants for planned districts and the following conditions and variance. Three conditions, number one, that a detailed signage plan in shall be submitted as part of the final development plan. Two, that a detailed landscape plan in compliance with the approved landscape plan per case Sims 93-3 and section 145 of the zoning resolution shall be submitted as part of the final development plan. Third condition, that no new lighting shall be installed without submission of a lighting plan in compliance with the zoning resolution. Variance one, section 137.3, parent medical four, that the new commercial building shall be permitted to have a minimum 26-foot rear yard setback or a 50-foot rear yard setback is required.
I second the motion. Any discussion?
One quick question.
Yes.
Brian, if they came back in with a 25-foot setback, you know, with a redesign, would they have to go through the whole process again? Or could that be something that we approved as part of the final development plan, like how?
They would have to do 26 feet.
Okay, okay, so that is locked in? Okay, that's, I just wanted to clarify.
And just as a discussion of that, we spoke about the landscaping on, is that a condition or is that just a request?
There's two parts to the landscaping question. The part that's on the existing Kohl's is required, and we were pointing it out in the staff report that we're going to require it and our zoning inspector is going to work with the property owner regardless of what happens with this case. And the requirement for a landscape plan in compliance with section 93.3 or case 93.3, that handles that section.
So we don't need to worry about the right-of-way part, okay.
And then a detailed landscape plan will be required for this parcel as part of the final development plan.
Okay, great, thank you. I have no further.
Okay. Anybody else have any additional questions or comments about the motion that's before us?
All I would say is that I don't think that the, and I recognize that, as you stated this, that we don't have any details on the signage plan. But other than the grandfathered Burger King sign, I don't think there's any 10-foot signs on this property. So I'd be, you know, I'd like to see something that was lower, you know, consistent with, let's say, you know, with the car dealerships that we've recently approved, which I think it's like a six-foot sign.
Well, they do not have a signage plan that has been submitted and that will come with the final development plan approval, which does come back before us for our recommendation at that point.
Jeff, just so you know, this would be the shortest sign on Fields Erle. The car dealerships were in the twenties.
Yeah, there were variances granted. I don't think the Enterprise one was, was it?
It's not on Fields Erle, though.
Exactly.
But it's, but they're all over 10 feet, like every single one are in the twenties and thirties.
Right, but we are not approving signs tonight.
As you have moved it, you are not, correct?
Correct, that comes before us in a final development plan.
As it stands currently, yes.
Yeah, I'm good with
May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Reichman?
No.
Mr. Edder?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Case Sims-95-1, Waterstone Car Wash. May we have the report from our staff, Brian Snyder?
Good evening, Brian Snyder, Haywood County. This case is a final development plan modification. The case was Sims 95-1, Waterstone. This was an 11-acre portion of a 211-acre development that included the King's Auto Mall, most of which was in Deerfield Township. So this, the 11 acres on the south or on the north side of Fields Erle that are south of Deerfield Township are included in this request. The subject site was originally approved for a Perkins Restaurant, which was constructed, operated for a number of years, went out of business. It's most recently been an Iron Chef, I believe, and is currently vacant. The proposal is to tear down the existing restaurant and replace it with a new car wash. Oh, that is okay, sorry, looking at the plan behind you, trying to make it out. The car wash would be a long automated car wash. You would come in from the north through a private drive that exists off of Union Cemetery, runs over to Waterstone. And you, if you came in the development, you would go through the the kind of order station that has a covered canopy, progress around the corner towards the building. You would decide whether to go in for the car wash or go down for, using the vacuum islands, which would be under the proposed gas, or vacuum island canopy. So that large rectangle on the left side of the site plan, that is a, that's another canopy that would cover the vacuum islands. So those vacuum islands would be covered with a structure. Either way, if you went to the vacuum islands or you went through the car wash, you would exit the property through a one-way exit drive that would take you past the adjacent office building, I believe it is, to the east, out through their parking lot and then connect you back with the driveway or Waterstone Boulevard up to the north. There would be no access from that property through this property. That would be a one-way exit only and the entrance would be a one-way entrance only from the north. The conditions of approval in this case didn't prohibit this use or any of the proposed development on this site, so this did not require a major revision. That's why it's not going through the same process that Kohl's just went through. Rather, this was a lot that was created for commercial use and this is a commercial use permitted in the retail zone. However, there are two parts to your request tonight. One, you can consider the consistency with the zoning resolution, which I'll get into briefly in a minute. The second part is consistency with the intent of the original PUD plan. The zoning commission has to determine before they approve a final development plan modification that the proposal is consistent with the intent of the original approval. I will go through the zoning compliance, there are a number of issues with the property as it relates to compliance. First of all, the building is 31 feet from Union Cemetery Road, where a 50-foot setback is required. The current building meets that setback from both Union Cemetery and Fields Erle Road. This, you can see the long, kind of narrower building on the right side of the plan. That's 31 feet from Union Cemetery and a 50-foot setback is required, so they're asking for a 19-foot setback variance for that. They are proposing the streetscape buffer along that side and maintaining the required streetscape buffer along Fields Erle Road. So you can see those both there, that kind of mitigate the setback issues. But 20 feet would likely be noticeable. I don't know that there are any other front yard setback variances similar to this on the other properties surrounding this site. There are side and rear yard setbacks in the EE district as well, 30 feet from the side and 50 feet from the rear. In this case, the side property line is the west property line of the left side of the plan as you look at it. And the north property line, the dark black line, is running kind of diagonally across the top. That is the rear property line. A 50-foot setback is required from that property line. Both the order station and the proposed dumpster are within that 50-foot setback and both of those are required to meet the setback, so that's two other variances. One for the order station and one for the dumpster. Additionally, a 30-foot setback is required from the western property line, the side property line, a 30-foot side yard setback. The dumpster is two and a half feet from that property line, so that's another additional variance that would be needed. And those are, those are the setback issues with relation to the structures on the property. There were some additional concerns that staff noted, one being the site access and circulation. The concern is despite the fact that they meet the stacking space requirements barely within the property on the south side of their property line, there is a potential for this type of use to accumulate additional cars beyond the minimum requirements. And in this case, if they do, they're going to be stacking on property that they don't own on the adjacent lot and potentially blocking the shared access drive to the north. That's a concern that staff has related to the site circulation and access. We're additionally concerned with the fact that everybody coming in the property has to leave through the adjacent parking lot rather than to an actual street. There's a private drive, there's a public street. Fields Erle is restricted, they can't actually access Fields Erle, there was a condition of approval about that. But they can access Union Cemetery directly and they can access the private drive in the back, which is what we would prefer. There could be some type of looping pattern that allows people to come in and go out the same way. There was a plan at one point to put the car wash on the other side of the property, which both increased the stacking spaces and removed the required setback variances and then also allowed parking or traffic to come in and go out the same access point onto the private drive. That was honestly a much better plan and eliminated almost all of our concerns. But that's not the plan that's before you, this is the plan that's before you now, this is a final development plan. So if you approve this, this is what's allowed to be constructed and only this. So that's one of our concerns as well with the traffic coming in and out that way. I mean, even to the point where if you wanted to go vacuum a car before you got a car wash for whatever reason and you were in the vacuum island and decided to get a car wash, you would have to exit the property, drive all the way around the office building and come back into the property from the access drive to the north to get back in line to go through the drive-through. So I'm not sure how that works, but it seems like that adds an awful lot of congestion and potential congestion onto the private access drive to the north. In addition, they're proposing their standard monument sign. This site has a very detailed signage plan. It goes back a really long ways and it stipulates the size and height of signs along with the fact that the sign face itself has to be green and the lettering has to be white. That was part of the sign plan that was approved by a previous version of this commission that I'm sure none of you were on. And as such, being that the zoning, or the resolution of the county commissioners at the time this was approved, required a signage plan be submitted. And the fact that the zoning commission has the authority to approve the signage plan, you do have the authority to vary from that green and white requirement of the signage plan if you choose. However, all the other signs have been required to maintain that green and white appearance up to this point. So that is up to the board or up to the commission to decide. I believe that that is it, I do not have any other findings to make and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Brian. Is the applicant here?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Sophia Hawley, I'm an attorney at Keating, Newthing and Cleecamp and I'm here on behalf of the applicant. I'm joined by Ms. Kaylee Bevington, she's an engineer and representative here for the applicant as well. For record purposes, my bar number is 91361 and I state an intent to appeal on behalf of the applicant to the ultimate decision that comes out of this process.
Just remember, we're a recommending body.
I know, I know.
On this case.
It's final, that's right. Pardon me?
You're more important now.
Thank you.
We're much more important right now than we were five minutes ago.
We've elevated our status.
And thank you, Mr. Schneider, for your comments and your guidance throughout this process. and your guidance throughout this process. A few points that we can make sort of out of the bat. We are happy to change and concede on the sign, and we'll make our sign fit and be compliant with the height and the colors and everything. So that's a concession that we're able to make. Ms. Bevington's going to speak a little bit more as to some of the other factors that were raised. One of them is the circulation here. Ms. Bevington has worked on projects like this a bunch of times. We do not want to put in a car wash that isn't efficient, that doesn't get people in and out. Car washes are a creature of convenience, and to the extent that they hold people up, they're not going to be functional. So we've designed something that is going to be functional. Further, our Title Wave has the most high-quality newest equipment. Ms. Bevington will speak to that as well. This equipment gets people in and out quickly and in an efficient manner. So we would submit to you that our stacking is going to be appropriate. As Mr. Snyder mentioned, it does meet the code. And then just sort of to point out another item. Permitted uses here include drive-through restaurants, drive-through commercial facilities, i.e. beverage. So Starbucks could go here. At Chick-fil-A, I hate to mention it again. Dunkin' Donuts, which is a problem in many locations. So the use here is not going to be as intense as a Starbucks, as a Chick-fil-A, except on Sunday, in which case it will be more. With respect to the dumpster and the location of the dumpster, I will just highlight that the current dumpster is non-conforming, that the proposed dumpster will be enclosed. And there... The dumpster that we're putting in the proposed site is next to a utility box in the adjacent property that's where the pet land's located. And if you look to the west of the pet land, there's also a dumpster enclosure there that's facing the pet land property from the AT&amp;T store. So it sort of fits in the area. And finally, with respect to the appropriateness here, this is a perfect location for a car wash. I pulled out Hamilton County GIS, and within half a mile, there is... Or less, there's Infinity of Cincinnati, Subaru of King's Auto Mall, King's Ford, King's Kia, King's Volkswagen, Performance King's Honda, McCloskey Chevrolet, Performance Lexus, Joseph Fiat, and then a Costco gas station. All auto uses, plenty of cars. They could benefit from the services we're seeking to provide here. It's currently an Iron Chef that is vacant. It's not the intent of Sims Township to have vacant property. It's not contributing to the area. We are seeking a use that would. And with that, unless you have any questions, I'll ask Ms. Bevington to speak a little bit more to the technicalities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening again. My name is Kaylee Bevington. I'm a project manager with Bowler. We're the civil engineering consultant working on behalf of Title Wave. Just a little bit of background.
Any address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. 1573 King Charles Drive, Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, 15237. So just a little bit of background on Title Wave. They were started actually in Atlanta, Georgia in 2004, and then they expanded their footprint across the south. So they are currently operating, I think, over 100 at this point locations across the south. And they're now currently in the process of expanding in the northeast, which includes Ohio, Michigan, New York, and Pennsylvania. In their time since opening in 2004, they've become a recognized leader in the express exterior car wash market. And they're very experienced in this market and know what works well for them. Their aim is always to design sites and buildings to be attractive additions to the community. If you visit their website, you would see their sites are usually landscaped very well. The building has a lot of glazing, stone veneer. They market it to be very attractive and a nice part of the community. A little bit more into the details of how this site would operate. A typical mature wash generates roughly 500 customers a day, give or take. As she mentioned, most other quick-serve restaurants or retail uses generate far more trips than that. So this is a much lower intensity use than something like that. Title Wave feels that operationally, there is more than enough stacking for them. A few things to note about that. The car wash can run six cars all at the same time when they're in the queue back-to-back. The equipment can handle more than 1,000 cars a day. So the equipment's more than adequate for handling that 500 number to keep the cars moving through. And then lastly, monthly memberships, which is part of their program, make up approximately 65% of their customers. So this helps expedite payment process with a sticker and/or plate reader technology. So people pull up to that pay kiosk there, and they kind of can just slide right through and go into the car wash. There's also an attendant booth with a customer service person there to assist if there were to be an issue at the pay kiosk. And then lastly, typical sites for Title Wave have a minimum of 24 vacuums. In this case, this site is only proposing 21 because it is a tight site. Obviously, we tried to fit a lot here and keep it working as functionally as possible. And so that's where we landed with this layout. So with that, I thank you for your time, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Sue. Question, no particular order. First question. Did I hear right? Did you have a different site plan prior to this evening? And was it flipped around? Because staff talked about that.
Yes, we went through a couple iterations conceptually early on with staff in our discussions with them. And we threw out several ideas to try and see what we could achieve that would require the least number of variances. And in the end, we landed on this. It reduced the number of variances while still working operationally for Title Wave. So there was an iteration, as he mentioned, that had the building flipped. But from Title Wave's perspective, it was a no-go for them. It was not going to work operationally.
So flipping it around obviously would create a longer stack line, which would then alleviate our staff's concern related to the traffic impact?
That's true. But Title Wave believes that this stack is adequate. It will do the job, and it works better for them as a whole as far as the way their sites work.
Okay. I don't know that we, in this case, ask for a traffic impact study. Do we typically ask for a traffic impact study?
No, we don't. We don't have any traffic impact engineers on staff. The Hamilton County Engineer requires that if they feel it is necessary based on the number of trips that would be generated. Given that this is a... Was a restaurant prior, I doubt that there would be an issue.
The reason why I ask is what we heard was this is less traffic than a Starbucks and some other uses, okay? So without actually seeing the study, you're just anecdotal with your evidence, correct?
Right. Yeah. I mean, that would... You would pull that from the ITE manual about trips for that use.
Right, but you haven't done that.
It's just a general statement, correct?
Right. But you haven't done it. Right. Okay. So just... I just want my board to understand.
Yep. Nope, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you. It looks like on their plans... And I don't know if you can speak to the architectural details? Because you're the engineer.
I could try. I'm sure an architect would probably be offended, but I can try and answer some questions.
Well, I just... It's not very detailed from what I see at this time.
Sure. We can provide a... We could provide a standard architectural package. I don't know, Brian, if we provided that in our submission or not. But in general, the building is kind of a gray stone across the bottom and then almost entirely windows across the middle section of the building. And then they typically have a gabled blue roof. And then the canopy is a gabled roof as well. It's only a roof canopy. There's no sides to the vacuum structure.
And what is the canopy made of?
I believe it's a metal roof.
So that's... I'm looking at like metal structure?
Yeah, it kind of is just a...
Colored metal structure?
A blue, I believe, metal structures with a metal gable roof. So pitched roof.
Okay. And then you... It looks like you have these glazed doors on one section, but it looks like on the front and the rear of the tunnel, those are... Is that correct? They're not... They're just standard, what, roll-up doors?
I believe they're standard roll-up doors, but they are glass. I think. That's my understanding.
Doesn't really show that in the depiction that I'm looking at.
And are they... Do they go up and down with each usage? Or are they only down when it's closed?
I would think they stay open most of the time when they're operating, and then they close them during their off-hours.
And is it open 24/7?
No, they're not 24/7. Varies by location, but I think pretty standard would be like an 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., something like that.
So typically on a final development plan, we like to see as much detail as possible.
Sure.
Specifically architecturally.
Okay.
Because, you know, you're coming forth with your building, and, you know, if we say yes and, you know... No offense, it doesn't look appealing to us. Then... And especially if we haven't vetted it here. We haven't done our job. So...
Sure. I understood. I don't know if that was requested or not, but we'd be happy to provide it. They kind of have a standard package that they provide for all their sites during this kind of preliminary.
Yeah.
We could provide that, no problem. And then obviously, once it's approved, they go on and do their full-on.
Well, this is the final... Is it not? This is the final development plan approval.
Correct. I'm sorry. I meant... When I said final, I meant like for building permit.
Yeah. Well, we're not the building department.
No, no. Understood. I'm not arguing with you. I'm just saying, we could provide that.
No, I didn't take it as an argument. I'm just clarifying who we are. So... And then did... Do we have the landscape package in here?
Yeah, there is. And just to clarify, Mr. Chairman, we don't request the architectural... The full architectural plans generally because we don't have any zoning requirements for building materials. So whether it's stone or siding, that's not a zoning compliance issue, so we don't ask for that.
I know. We just like to see it. Yeah, is it in my pack? It must be in my pack.
It's in the new one, so the one we handed out.
Is this the new one? Oh, no.
This one?
Yeah, the smaller one. We just got it revised.
Can we see the larger one? And is there a lighting plan?
Yeah, put up one of those, too.
And does that conform, Mr. Snyder? I believe so.
Mr. Snyder, would it be possible to pull things up on the computer?
That's not my computer.
Okay, so like if there was an online portal, for example, like with a link that could download it? Would that... And just to clarify, we were seeking not to overburden the administration. And so we actually specifically discussed elevations relating to the property. And it was our understanding that that was not... That was not supposed to be submitted. So we mean no offense or that we're not violatory. There are actually elevations.
We're not taking offense to it.
Okay. You just... It would be helpful, is what I'm understanding.
There's lighting and landscaping?
Yeah, then correct me if I'm wrong, Brian. I don't think there was any non-conformities regarding landscaping or lighting.
I don't believe so.
Just checking. Just asking the questions.
Yes, what the applicant had said was correct. We actually had a full, like, building permit ready, set, submitted to us with zoning. It had like 40 sheets in it. We told them to remove like 38 of those sheets.
And give us 36, you know?
Yeah. That would have been a 400-page packet you got tonight.
But was it architecturals for this site or just what it says on here and not site-specific?
I didn't even look at them long enough to find that out.
They were not site-specific, but they'd be pretty close to what would be eventually built.
So I don't want to assume anything at this juncture. So is there an REA in place between the parcels?
I'm... Pardon? Can you repeat?
Is there a declaration between the parcels sharing access?
I believe so, yes. Yes, I believe so. But I don't have my...
We don't know for sure, and we don't know if it's recorded.
That's a good question.
Thank you.
Is that about the parking... The access easement with the adjacent property owner?
Is it already in place?
I have no idea, but that's one of our main concerns, that all of this traffic is exiting through that property and none of their traffic can come back.
And this property is... What you're talking about is the US Bank, right?
The Petland.
The Petland. Okay.
Right.
Yeah, there's three properties.
Yeah, US Banks are like on this side.
Right.
But there's an existing one.
Yeah, that's a question... That's a question or an issue that's raised in the staff report. All the traffic goes out through that other property, and none of it can come back. And I'm not sure what that easement agreement said, but it usually is reciprocal. So...
Well, not only that, but Union Cemetery is only, I think, one way out towards Fields Erdel.
Yeah, you have... There's a median there, so you have to turn right.
So, Mr. Snyder, if we did ask to flip the building, we heard that there was going to be a number of additional variances. Did you see a plan with the flip of the building?
At some point, like was stated, we... There were three, I believe, different iterations that were sent to me, too, with the building on this side and one with it on the other side. I'm not positive that the building was on the other side. I honestly don't recall. I just know that the access came in from that side, and it needed far less variances. So I think the building was on that side, and it might have been shorter. I think that might have been the issue. But if I recall, there was one, like, side yard setback variance, no front yard setback variances, and the rest of the structures met the requirements.
Okay.
I'm concerned about the one-way going out of the property into the Petland because I'm looking at the Petland property, and I'm guessing that's a two-way access drive at this point.
At this point, it is, yes.
And so if you were at the Petland site and you went down this way and you didn't know that that was a one-way, you're going to have a lot of conflict and like you would have a really hard time turning around if you were on the Petland site and couldn't go through. So my guess is there would be people that would ignore that one-way because if they couldn't turn around, what else would they do? So I think that being two-way, I feel like is almost necessary with the configuration of that site. Has Petland been... Has that property owner been just like... Has this been shared with them?
It's a property.
Okay.
I mean, the flip of the buildings, I mean, the flip of the buildings, okay, where you enter, come around, you have much more stacking at that juncture. And then you can exit from there, and now you have to realign.
I don't think it works even in that orientation.
You go like this.
Yeah. I don't...
That's how it works. So, do we have, do we have the signage package?
We do, but the signage package is non-conforming, and we concede, we would make the sign conforming with the specifications. There's a very specific look, color, that's approved, and we would meet all of that.
Does it, does it meet with the height and square footage?
It did, yes. So I guess, I think the background becoming green would solve the problem.
Well, yeah, I don't know what...
I mean, if it doesn't, if the building has a blue roof, I'm not sure why we would want to make the sign green if it doesn't match the building.
We're gonna, we could be on that. I just want to make sure that it meets our signage requirement.
Yeah, I mean, the one on, that's on the signage plan, is it looks like it's like seven feet tall with a stone base. It looks like a fairly responsible sign.
This was part of the Waterston development that Great Traditions did way back when. And they were in a situation where part of the land is in a different county and township. So they're looking at that signage as you would as a planner, right?
Mm-hmm.
And it works with the development as a whole. I realize we're Sims Township in Hamilton County, but I have to respect the planning that was in place, it's just my opinion.
Yeah, sometimes the legacy signage doesn't make sense anymore.
Well, I agree, but you have to change it all.
Yeah, yeah, or at least allow that.
I mean, we're, you know, now we're going to start making decisions for Warren County, for Deerfield Township, and, I mean, what is, is...
I honestly can't say that Deerfield or Warren adopted that signage plan. I don't know if everything in Kings Auto Mall is... Well, I, all it said was that they had to submit a signage plan, which they did. But what I'm saying is, I don't think all the signs in Kings Auto Mall are green and white, with the kind of fake green roof that you see in the pictures.
But this was part of the Waterston development plan.
Yeah, right. Well, it was part of the larger...
Yeah, but this was separate.
No change.
I just remember when this happened, so...
I mean, I would be interested to see what, like, Verizon's sign looks like, you know, and like, some of these other outlooks. Because I agree that if they're, if all the other, if US Bank and Petland and Verizon all has the same signage, then it should be consistent. But if, at this point, if everyone has different signage, then that consistency's already gone.
I think they are, they all have those uniformity in this.
Okay, do we have any more?
You know, you're showing your email.
I know, I was just waiting for her to send me a link.
Do we want to, if you have any other questions, we can let the applicant sit down. We can continue with the meeting, we can come back for additional questions.
All right, let's do that, because I've got a bunch more questions for y'all, but I'd like to...
We have another case, we'd like to kind of keep moving here, so. So, thank you. We will ask you additional questions once we hear from the audience.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience that is a proponent of the application? Proponent. Is there anyone in the audience that is an opponent? Please step forward and state your name, address, and...
My name is Jerry Atkins. My address is 11982 Brights Oaks Lane, Cincinnati, Ohio, 45249. And I am the owner of the 9938 Waterston Boulevard property, now tenanted by Petland.
Okay.
And I am an opponent of the project. You know, there's, I have a history with this project, because I was involved in it back in the late 90s, when Tom Yums was putting it together, when he acquired everything. And yes, there are rules and regulations, and there was a process to go about this. And Tom is very judicious about his planning and things that he does. And there are things in place that limit the signs, and we all abided by the rules. We originally developed a family Christian store here, which went out of business. Petland came in their place very quickly, soon thereafter. But when we bought it, interestingly enough, somebody else had bought it without zoning and lost. It was Schlotzky's Deli. We bought it from Schlotzky's because their zoning petition for a drive-through was denied. History repeats itself, as the quote says, "Those who are, ignore history are doomed to repeat it." We had an owner, this property transferred internally and then externally. Iron Chef was failing for a number of years. They didn't take care of their property, they didn't take care of their pavement. We, and the association, which governs the property, the out parcel, the auto mall, and the rest, we did things for them, and they got backcharged, and they still didn't pay it. So, Iron Chef sold it, had it under contract to a doctor. The doctor then had a, somebody come to him with a car wash, and they forced their hand to buy it without zoning. That, that's, I would never do that. I've been doing investing for a long time, and something of this size, when it's restricted by an association, and then it's restricted by the zoning itself, that's a tough, tough risk to take. So I talked to the association about, asked what they knew about it. The association has not been approached. They, in fact, do have a design review board, and they do take a look at all these type things. So I want to introduce this to the board.
Thank you. Do you have enough, Jerry?
I've got four copies.
We can share.
We can share.
I'm trying to look for signage.
Don't worry about it. Let's not end there.
But notwithstanding of it being, when this was originally developed, Tom Yums did not, what Tom Yums did not like, he did not like drive-throughs. He thought that that would limit what you could do here. So he, restaurants, minimal-impact drive-throughs are what was approved. I talked to Tom yesterday, I talked to him last week about it, and that was the standard. So a bank drive-through, which has minimal impact, short queue, that could get through and approved, and it was. The other three parcels, originally we had a Pier One, which was replaced by AT&amp;T and Vitamin Shop. This site was Perkins, and it was replaced by Iron Chef. Iron Chef has been a problem child since they got in there. That, and part of the association requirements, what we did two years ago, that drive, and I'm going to give you an aerial.
That will give you a little bit better idea, and I do have 30 something copies in us.
We only have to meet setbacks in Deerfield.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Get my friends at Meyer's sign, they can all read it, everybody.
So, just in itself, I love drive-throughs. I take my car through a car wash probably too much, probably twice a week. But one of the things I can tell you, to say that somebody has a novel plan to quickly get cars that are queued, is false. I've been to all the car washes, particularly in this area. This is the neighborhood I live in. The zoning was approved to allow the new car wash that is along Montgomery Road at Fields Earl. But it was placed in front of a lock-and-store. That used to be a sports store, it used to be other things, but it's a non-tenanted building. So they were allowed, it didn't have an impact, they could queue on-site, nothing went out into the street. This property, if you look at their plan, their queue almost comes to the common street. And if you look at this plan, interestingly, the Google aerial almost shows the common drive that goes through. Well, they queue back to the northeast corner of the Petland store. And right across the way is a drive-through that comes out, the out of the US Bank drive-through. Those are handicapped spots, which you required us to put there. So we have parking on both sides. You're going to be, what they're doing, they're taking a site, a use that is too tight on their site, and they're taking advantage of the common street. This will be a disaster, but it's beyond that. There's right-in, right-out on Waterston Boulevard to the east. You cannot come in Waterston and take a left into the property. The only thing you could do, you could right-out or right-in. This, the other side, you can right-in, you can go both ways. But this is going to create ongoing congestion and out that you don't want. The other thing is, this doesn't just serve us. This serves the entire shopping center. So this is the throat to Costco, to Target, to Best Buy, and to a large office park that is in the back of the site. We've talked to the office investor, we've talked to rent manager. This is not something anybody wants. So this is, everybody's just getting to know this story, but this is going to be opposed by everybody in this project. And we abide by the signs. We don't want you to deviate from this. This was a planned project, and we played by the rules. I've played by the rules all the way through on signage, I've played by covenants. Our property, we take care of. I'm very OCD, so we have flowers, we seal the lot, we talk to our neighbors. I'm the policeman, the Petland last, or the AT&amp;T and Vitamin Shop, they didn't do any landscaping last year, so Waterston is doing it for them. They're using me because I have a passion about this project, but I have a history about it, too. When you have denied this type of use before, to say that this won't have an impact, it will have an impact on the traffic into the overall center. It's going to clog this entire corridor. This is a very small project, and it's got a small common drive that we all share. The idea, George, you talked about flipping, and they come the other way? That's private property, they can't come through our property, they can't queue on our lot. This is our common lot, everything else is owned. Yes, you can drive in and out, but it wasn't meant to queue your property.
Will you say this is our common lot on this?
Well, the common drive, but the common drive is in front of US Bank, it's in front of our north entrance, and so that's it. But there is a reciprocal easement that allows cross-traffic and back, but it's just, it's isolated traffic, it's not so you can direct your queue to your drive-through to back. They have to be self-contained, and this parcel is not meant to be a self-contained store.
Right.
They queue almost 48 cars at the Mike's Car Wash up the street. They kind of know what they're doing. If you say somebody from Georgia's going to come here and do something different than Mike's, it's not going to happen. This is a disaster, this is not even close to something that could be approved. And, but the big fear comes, what's going to happen to that driveway when all these, all of us are going to have a problem with this? And then, when we're bringing in traffic at different times of the day, and the traffic, somebody wants to come in, because all the traffic that comes off of Fields Earl, most of it comes through the west entrance. And then you have another entrance here, but it's limited access right-in, right-out for our property. So it's problematic on a lot of levels. This was not meant...
But just so we're clear, they have rights to this.
They do.
Jerry, can I finish my thing? They also have rights to this.
Not the same.
What do you mean?
Well, I implore upon them that the declarations are in place, but that is a common drive. This is a passenger passageway. They can't start their queuing to the south side of the property.
So, just so we're clear, if I'm a customer to this, and I can traverse across here and come in here, can I not? Okay, so I can have access this way?
Right.
And my point to the flip was, if the tunnel is, say, starts here, and they come in here, there is a stacking lane.
Right, that's correct.
Okay, that's all I was saying. I want my board to understand what we're talking about.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question while you're standing here?
Yeah.
On this plan that was given to us, C 702 landfill plan, I'm not sure what it's dated, 5022, there is a, what appears to be a property line around the proposed development. And on this plan, sort of where we're going on stacking...
This is not his plan, just so...
I realize this, but I'm going somewhere, hold on.
Jerry, can you... And so on this plan that I'm looking at, it comes in stacked, and it goes to, I'm assuming this is a property line. It's dark, and it looks like a property line, doesn't it?
Yeah.
And this is your property. This is, and they put a "do not enter" on your property. So, and they put one way. And if I, and this is, I realize it's not a driveway, but what you're trying to say to us, if I understand, I'm just trying to understand, that this is a cross-easement, that they can go this way, but you also could go this way, correct?
That's correct.
And they're saying, they're putting a restriction on your property that you cannot do this, is that fair? Okay, that's on my seat.
The declarations are in place today, they're available, they're recorded.
And it's kind of been, the neighbors have been ignored, the association have been ignored, they haven't done their homework. This is a jam it down your throat. We bought a property without zoning, and we really need your help. But it will be problematic to three property owners. This isn't where somebody's adjacent doing something we don't like. This is a use that is not consistent with the original plan was. And the association's not going to support it. So even if you give zoning to this, even if you permitted it, the association may say, you know what, that's not a use we want, you don't conform, you're not allowed to do it. So they've got a lot of homework to do before they come back to you. And one is, I can't imagine any way that they would come to us to give us a plan unless they're doing five cars a day to get a car wash.
That's why I asked if there was a declaration that was recorded.
It is. Yep. So, but what I'm trying to present is, this is not just an out parcel. This is part of a larger plan that was done correctly, and it was done part of a plan unit development. There were many, many meetings here, there were many meetings in Warren County. But this is a project that works. But this property, and the access here, controls the entire project. And the auto mall is looked at differently from their signage, from what they have. But they do have different requirements, but they do have, and I can talk, I've talked to the owners there, they hate going through the process, but it's worked. We do the same thing. So even though there's a different owner on the shopping center, North American complied, we've complied. The Verizon has the same sign that we have out in front, we don't like it. But we've come to you for our signage, when we did Family, you have certain requirements, we've abided by it. And now somebody is coming in and saying, well, we want something different. But the use is not compatible with the four out parcels that are there today. And we recommend, much like staff did about the concerns, that concern about that common drive that controls access for the four users, this would basically destroy all of our businesses. And it would have a negative impact, probably would preclude the US Bank, which is now being, they're going out for lease, they have a user. But it would have a negative impact on what they're able to do from an economic standpoint. So all the other car washes, the Mike's is a standalone parcel that operates on its own. The car wash that's on the corner operates on its own. This is asking three other property owners to join in with them, to cooperate, to give up our rights, so they have their rights. They bought the property without zoning, that's their mistake. But the association, and we ask that the township also act against it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else in the audience that has any, that is an opponent of this application? Anyone that has any neutral comments for this application? Having seen none, we will now close the public portion of our hearing.
It was my understanding that I would be permitted to continue speaking. I was asked to come in a little bit earlier.
Well, okay, well, I misunderstood, ma'am, because I thought you were finished speaking. We have the ability to ask you questions.
I see, okay. I have misunderstood your statement as well, because I was not finished, and I would like to briefly make a few comments if possible.
I'll let you finish your application.
Thank you.
I would like to address the comment that the property's not zoned. That's not correct, this property is expressly zoned for car wash use. As we were sitting down, I was just conferring with Ms. Bevington, and we have the capacity to modify our circuitry, could you please?
Yeah, I know. So to address the concern regarding the one-way traffic through Petland, what we can do is, we'd have to relocate the dumpster, but we could allow another exit up where the dumpster is on our site today.
So...
That, they, that was not presented before, because they try and limit the entry points to their sites to just limit confusion and access from, coming from different directions. However, in this case, if that's necessary, that would be something that we would be willing to do.
Well, did staff mention to you that it was a problem?
I think it was included in the staff report.
Yeah.
Correct, yeah.
Right. So the issue is, is I know you're saying we could change it, but to change it, then we would have to table tonight, and you would have to come back before us.
Understood.
And if it is...
Is that what you're requesting?
It sounds to me like that would be helpful. And to the extent that it would be helpful, we would prefer that it be tabled, that we can get more information and to present to you. Particularly, we have, we actually have front-end elevations, so on and so forth. Instead of getting a denial, we would request a table.
You request a table at this point? Okay.
Yes.
All right. So procedurally, I guess, Brian, are we just to make a motion to table the application at this juncture?
To a specific date, if possible, so like to next month or two months? I don't know how long it will take.
Next month would be... Yeah, I mean, the sooner the better.
Okay.
Are there, should we, are there any other questions or comments that we should take note of before...
Well, I think you've heard a lot of them.
I just want to make sure we captured everything, if there were any other concerns.
I do have a few other concerns, but, you know, I can either state them now, or I can hold them until next month, and...
I guess I hate to waste people's time, next month.
Right, let's be fair, and let's tell them that. And then, understanding we're tabling until next month, you're going to tell me, Kim, the next date.
July 20.
July 20?
June.
June?
June 20?
I'm sorry, June 15.
June 15.
Or a day.
Okay. Time gets past us, so, so, please, go ahead.
So how many FTEs do you have at any one time working?
In the ballpark of five, usually. They employ somewhere around 15 employees, but obviously, they're not all on at the same shift.
And it looks like there's only four parking spots?
Correct, they also allow employees to park in the vacuum stalls if needed.
Okay. Have you done any kind of sound analysis on the vacuums and machinery, or electromagnetic analysis on the machinery, particularly in light of the fact that you have a pet store right next door with birds and dogs that could be... right next door with birds and dogs that could be?
There has been a sound study done on another site that we could, we could provide.
I'd like to see that. And for, um, for our board here, there was a, a, I guess, a similar scenario that we reviewed, at least in, in my reign, which was, uh, in my time here, uh, which was the electric car charging station, um, and, you know, it was similar from the standpoint that it's a very unique singular use type of property. So, meaning that if it closes down, nothing else but a charging station can go there. And I think the same thing is basically true here. Once it's a car wash, it's a car wash until it's torn down and, and reused again. And at that time, for the charging station, we made a stipulation that upon the termination or the end of the use as a charging station, that the property would be remediated back to its original use, which in that case was a parking lot. And, you know, I have a concern here that if this is a car wash and it's not successful and they close down, it becomes a problem for the, for the township. So I'd like to see, and Brian, if you've got some thoughts on this, like the last time, that if we do approve this, that we would include a stipulation that the property be remediated back to its original use.
We didn't actually do that with the car, with the car charging station, they agreed to do that voluntarily, but that was not a condition of the commission. I don't know how we would enforce that.
I don't know how we would enforce it either.
Yeah, they could put a bond in or something like that, that would.
That's beyond, I'm not in a position to take bonds or maintain bonds, that's not something that we do through zoning.
Ken. That's all I had.
Anybody else want to have a, any comments?
I have one quick thing.
Yeah.
You mentioned that you could possibly add another access point by the dumpster enclosure towards the northern part of the site. I don't think that solves the issue of the southern access point, I think that has to be two-way. I'm not sure I could support it without.
Well, that's how it would become two-way, because if it's two-way right now, there's, they're hitting a dead end. Because you'd, you'd have to go back through, like, you'd have to go backward through the car wash. So if we add another exit to the north, then you could have the Petland connection be two-way. Is that?
Okay. I understand what you're saying now, yes.
It's confusing with all the one-way circulation, but I think that's how it would work.
Okay.
And I would just suggest that you have a review of the, of the existing declaration that has, that has been in place.
And I, I would, I would second that, and I'd further say, I wouldn't be looking for any kind of, any modifications, you know, I think it's very, that the, the probability that any variations are going to be approved is going to be pretty difficult, I'd say.
To the extent that there's, and I haven't reviewed them, cross access.
Setbacks.
Oh, you mean with respect to the, all of the setbacks?
All the setbacks.
Okay. So if, we need to come back and not be asking for any variance?
I would recommend that.
Okay.
We need to see the plan.
We need to see the plan, but.
Okay, so, um, does anyone want a motion that we, um, table this?
I have one other quick comment, and then I can do a motion to table. I would like, I would be interested to know kind of what the peak traffic is at a kind of a typical location. You know, I know that the adjacent property owner said that, you know, Mike's can have anywhere from like 20 to 30 cars queuing. If that's not common with a title, I'd be interested in that, but, you know.
Yep.
That would be helpful information.
And just for my, when we submit these documents back, should we go through your office, Brian, and that'll be?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. You're basically kind of to do.
Okay.
So then I motion that we table this application to the next regular. Okay, we're continuing the public hearing to the next meeting on June 15th.
Before we second, all right, a quick procedural question, Mr. Chairperson.
Yes.
Step out for 10 minutes. Am I able to still vote on either the tabling or remediation?
Yes, you heard the majority of what we're talking about here. Anyone would like to second the motion?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? Having heard none, may we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Reichman?
Yes.
Mr. Edder?
No.
Mr. Kessler? Ms. Fields?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next case, Sims number 99-4, Union Savings Bank sign. May we have the report from staff, please?
Good evening, Brian Snyder again.
I'm only on vacation.
Cameron County Planning and Development, you should have a copy of the staff report for this case. This is Sims 99-4, it's another final development plan modification. Excuse me, this property is Z O O and has been through, similar to the Coles, it's been through a number of major revision projects related to the limitations on the height and square foot area of the building, mostly. None of that is, is really the subject of tonight's meeting. At some point in time in the past, and I honestly can't speak to when or how, two digital signs were installed on the wall of the existing Union Savings Bank building at the corner of Montgomery and East Kemper Road, one on each frontage. They're, they're approximately 29 square feet in size, they're matching red dot LED, or I'm not even sure, I don't think they were LED at the time. They've been there since long before I've worked at the county, and I don't know, again, how they were permitted. I've heard stories at the county, and they're, those are not factual, but it was either installed illegally, installed with a permit that shouldn't have been issued by somebody who shouldn't have issued a permit. They've always been considered to be grandfathered since I've worked at the county, and I believe they were installed prior to Sims Township taking over zoning, they were under county zoning at the time. Well, actually, I take that back, this is a 99 case, so this has been here for a long time. Regardless, I, I, there are two signs that are installed on the sides of the building that are not permitted by the zoning resolution currently. They are non-conforming, they're grandfathered. They've been working on them for a number of years, replacing as many parts as they could to keep them going for as long as they can. It's my understanding that they can't get parts to keep them going anymore, they haven't been turned on in a while, last couple of times I've driven by, they've been off, last couple of times before that, they were unreadable. And so to replace them, they have to take down the whole cabinet and put up new cabinets. When they take down the cabinet, they lose the non-conforming status on that sign, that sign is no longer non-conforming, anything that goes up there has to meet the requirements of the zoning resolution. So to replace the sign is not a face change, it's a complete replacement, because they're taking the entire structure down and putting up a whole new structure. It's no different than taking down an entire freestanding sign and putting a whole freestanding sign back up. You don't get to keep your non-conforming status through that. So when the sign comes down, the new sign has to meet the requirements of the code. Digital building signs are not permitted anywhere in Sims Township on any properties, not industrial or retail or office, specific to this property, which is Z O O Planned Office, Planned Residence with Office, sorry. And so that takes a variance to put those signs back up, one on each side, so two variances. The signs would be slightly smaller in size, at 26 square feet each, rather than the 29 that are currently there, and in the same locations as they are currently. So that's the request that's before you. There are no conditions specific to this, there was only one condition on the most recent rate, major revision, which limited the building to two stories in height. So there's no signage restrictions in the resolution, which allows it to be heard by the zoning commission, and you do have the authority to approve these signs. Staff does not find any reason why there should be these signs replaced on this building, there are no similar signs on any of the properties adjacent. This is one of the main commercial corridors in the township, the likelihood that somebody else will want a similar digital sign, especially when the new one goes up on this building, is pretty high. And so we're concerned about the precedent there, and there is no other precedent that I'm aware of for this anywhere, so this would be the first time, at least anywhere near this specific property that I'm aware of. That's all I have. If you have any, any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Thank you. Appreciate it. We will have questions for you after we hear from the applicant.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is the applicant here?
Good evening, my name is Stephen Hunt, I'm an attorney with the law firm of Aaronoff, Rosen and Hunt, 2200 US Bank Tower, Cincinnati, Ohio, 45202. And we are counsel for Union Savings Bank. And actually, I'm pinching for Rick Palo of my office who is handling this, and unfortunately, Rick caught COVID last week.
Oh.
He's still in isolation, but don't worry, I've been tested, I'm fine. So, as Brian indicated, this is a modification to the development plan for this site. As you know, you're familiar with the location, I'm sure, this is the corporate headquarters for Union Savings Bank. And the signage has become a problem with technology, these signs have been on the location for over 20 years, and cannot find parts, et cetera, and we felt it was better to put a new sign in this location. The technology has changed very, very dramatically. So I've, I was involved at the beginning, and we've been working with the township staff, and I've been working with Jeff Forbes, your township attorney, to get the signs repaired or modified. And initially, they wanted to go the, the course of trying to change your zoning code, as you know, and now allowing digital signs in office, but they have to be ground mounted, and this site, there's no place to ground mount the signs. So what we're doing is just basically replacing the signs with, with new technology. With me today are, are Mike Meyer and John Meyer from the Ray Meyer Sign Company that will explain the, the change in technology. I think you'll hear that the new signs would obviously be better for the corporation, but they'd also be better for the township, because the technology has changed and there's things that can be done. The bank is currently in the process of changing these exact same signs at a number of other, of their locations, and we've had no issues at the other locations changing, and it's just, we've run into this because your zoning code has changed and you, you went from, you know, from the county zoning to the township zoning. So I'm happy to answer any questions, I'll come back, but I thought it might be helpful if you heard the issues from the sign folks, who are the real experts in this situation.
Okay.
Happy to answer any now, or I'll be glad to come back.
Do you have any questions for the applicant at this point?
You referenced similar signs at other locations, do you by chance have a picture?
I, I think Mike can address that, they have almost the identical sign at other locations.
And I want to point this out here, I, is it a digital sign when a sign belongs to the savings bank?
Uh, Union Savings Bank, right.
Right. So it's two signs?
Yeah, I, I, they'll have to answer, are we replacing both? I think it's just a digital portion we're replacing.
Just the black area?
Is that, that correct? Just the digitals being replaced.
Yeah, just the 24-inch digital section that's on top of the USB Union Savings Bank.
And I think the actual replacement sign might even be a touch smaller, as maybe Brian indicated.
Any other questions?
I have a question, what's the intended, I mean, use of the digital sign? I guess, what if they typically broadcast on that sign when it was operational?
Well, I, I, they're probably more familiar, but I think they're mentioning rates and things, you know, it's a bank, you know, and, and.
Yeah, I was trying to kind of understand.
Attract customers and, you know, and, and as you probably know, the other three corners of the intersection there are retail, and digital signage is permitted in those three locations, so it's, you know, we don't think this is unusual. This is kind of a unique situation, the fact they've been there 20 years, and, you know, the technology, we just can't get the parts to fix it, and so, hey, let's put something that's better for everyone. At least that's, that's the thought process.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hunt.
Good evening. I'm Michael Meyer, I'm a principal with Ray Meyer Sign Company, I'm, I'm at 8942 Glendale Milford Road in Loveland, Ohio. And I want to thank you for allowing us to come up and talk about this tonight. I know that electronic message boards are difficult to talk about sometimes, and I seem to do it a lot, and, and tonight is a very unique situation. I'm almost never arguing in favor of an electronic message board to replace one that's already in place. Typically, I'm, I'm in areas where, you know, gateways into communities, a lot of times that are zone residential, churches and schools that want to put one in for informational purposes, and a lot of times that's a tough sell. This is a unique situation because it's already there, and it's been there for almost 25 years. Honestly, like was already talked about, we did not install it the first time. Matter of fact, the company that did is no longer in business, we don't know how, how it actually got there, but it's our job now to try to get it replaced. The, the technology has changed so much, and, and if you guys hear arguments for message boards from time to time, you, you may already know that the technology's changed so much in, just in the last seven or eight years, that the ability to control these things and make them more zoning friendly has become a very, very important part of the, of the manufacturing process in this, this whole deal. Because, you know, it's technology that's here, and it's, it's not going to go away, and it's, it's the way that, that businesses and institutions want to, they want to get their message across, so, so what do we have to do now? We have to figure out a way that they can coexist in society and do what they're meant to do, but not be obtrusive and, and, and not be, yeah, put in such a way that it's going to make people look at it and say, wow, I really wish that wasn't there. So I can certainly say that in this case, when that sign was, was installed, the, the software technology allowed you to do some very limited things with it. You could put a monochromatic message on it, it could scroll, it could roll, and it could chase, and that's about it, and it, it could flash. And I find that most of the places that I go to, to talk about these things in front of other zoning appeals boards and so on and so forth, that, that seems to be the, the main crux, is a lot of people don't like to see the flashing, the scrolling, the chasing, the hold times, and all those kinds of things. And the manufacturer, the product that we're attempting to put back up there, which is Watchfire, and maybe you've heard of them, has done a fantastic job in making their units much more zoning friendly, in that, for one thing, they're, all, all the communication now is wireless 4G cellular communication, where this, it, it, these things can be controlled by your handheld device, your smartphone, and you do have the ability to do a lot of things when it comes to hold times and, and brightness, lumens, daytime, nighttime, to meet the, the, the restrictions that communities put on their, their light pollution, things like that. The ability to allow a message to softly come in and come out without having to scroll and chase and roll, and quite frankly, a lot of the ones that I've installed, and, and we've installed about a half a dozen or so for Union Savings Bank in other communities, these things are in place. And, and so they're, they're attempting to do a very good job in trying to make these things more zoning friendly. And I think that's an important thing to think about as we, as we move forward with this particular sign. The other thing is I, you know, electronic message boards are meant to do two things. They're either trying to give you information, or they're trying to gain your attention. I think if you know the intersection, you know there, that, that's, the sign has got a, it's got its audience already, it doesn't need to punch you in the face by having things explode out of the sign so that you look at it, you're already there and you're seeing it. So for the bank, in order to, you know, advertise yields and, and rates and things like that, that in a volatile, you know, interest rate market, they're changing all the time, it's been a very important vehicle for them in order to get the information out. Much, much easier to do it on a sign like that, that can be changed easily than any other form of, of advertising or marketing that they could possibly have. So I think it's, it's critically important that, and, and, you know, Brian's right, it sets a precedent, but I would like to set a good precedent, so that if, you know, if it becomes. But I would like to set a good precedent, so that if, you know, if it becomes one of the first, I just did get one approved in Sims Township for Evans Landscape down on East Kemper about six weeks ago. And I argued the same case, exactly the same thing, with it's the same manufacturer. I think if we can get this thing approved, it will set a precedent moving forward that if and when and where another one goes in, that the same types of good intentions by the manufacturer to make it be able to live with everything else around it would be a very good thing. So I'll be happy to answer any questions about the unit itself before I sit down.
The sign you referenced with the Spade and Evans building mount, or is that a standalone?
I'm sorry?
The Evans sign that you just mentioned?
That's a ground-mounted sign. Yes.
In my recollection of the existing digital sign that was on Union Savings Bank, it had a lot of scroll, roll...
Exactly. That's ancient technology.
Will the proposed sign have any scroll, roll, chase, or flash?
If it's up to me, now, I would be wary to, you know, talk about putting conditions on anything. But my suggestions, strong suggestions to the end user would be, in a world where that's not an attractive element, there's other ways to get the message across, that you don't have to use those features, you know. And quite honestly, if the sign wasn't out of support by its manufacturer, and we were still able to get tiles for it, because as was mentioned, what has happened over time is the LED modules have just simply worn out. And we did our best to try to buy as much inventory, believe it or not, we actually bought some off eBay, in order to kind of keep the thing going. If we were able to get replacement parts for that sign, we wouldn't even be having this conversation. It would still be up and running, and it would still do all the things that it does today that in maybe, you know, some corners of the world, it would be an unattractive situation. And so I'm kind of glad that we finally could no longer find parts and pieces for it. I mean, they tried to put messages on it as long as they could, until there just were so many LEDs that weren't working anymore, they just couldn't do it, so they turned it off.
I'm just trying to get clarification. I'm looking at a sign that's going to have a fixed panel for three or five seconds, or if I'm looking at something that's going to have scroll, roll, chase, and flash, what can I anticipate as a driver driving by?
I would think it would be more of a hold, a static message on a hold.
You said more, so is it going to have both, or is it only going to have one?
Well, it certainly has the capability of doing that.
I understand that, but is it going to be fixed with periods of time?
Yes, absolutely.
So is that going to be any scroll, roll, and flash?
Well, I don't, I can't speak for the owner. But if it were up to me, then it would be, it would be more of a fixed situation, yes.
Do you know what the anticipated brightness of this is going to be?
I do. During the day, it's about 7,500 lumens, which is about the same as daylight, you know. And at night, it dips all the way down to 300. So they've done a really good job with that. Even as recently as 2011, they did not have the ability to do that. Once it was on, it was on, you know. But now, you know, those settings can be preset to take into consideration all kinds of different situations, even a very gloomy, dark day, that you're going to have thunderstorms, you know. Those settings can automatically change.
So it'll have some kind of photo cell or something that will...
I think it's all in the software package, quite honestly. It's the ability of the sign to recognize things on its own and make those changes on its own. Now, there's also presets that the end user can put into them as well, you know, to...
Right. I know that, and again, it's not, I think in the city of Loveland, but the Mike's Car Wash headquarters on Union Cemetery, which has a Watchfire...
Exactly.
It seems like it's incredibly bright at night, and I don't know if that's just that they've chosen to bypass any of those adjustments, or, you know, whatever it is.
And I agree with you on that one. Now, that board, we did not do that board, but that board is a full-color board as well. This is a, this is going to be a monochromatic board. This is not going to be a full-color board. But if I had, if I had to say, because I've seen that sign, at night, it seems to be very bright. It doesn't look like, right now, it's using its dimming capabilities to the best of its ability.
Right.
You just, oh, sorry.
So when you say monochromatic for us, I mean, you mean like black and white, or...
No, you can only get a monochromatic board in two colors, amber on a black field or red on a black field. The one that's currently up there now is red on a black field.
So that, and that's what you would be replacing it with, a red on a black field?
You know what? I don't, I don't really know the answer to that. Is it going to be, yeah, it's, so at the end of the day, from that standpoint, it's identical to what's up there now. It would be red on a black field.
That was my question.
And you know what? There's red in the Union Savings Bank logo, so I guess that probably makes more sense than using the amber, which is a much more yellow-gold color.
So, and this couldn't be retrofitted at some point with a full color?
No, no.
Okay.
Yeah, could we, I'm guessing we could put a stipulation on it, that it could only be two color, so...
I guess so.
Yeah.
That would be our right, right? If we said that it couldn't be a full color board, but it could only be a two-color board?
I would suggest that you limit it to a monochrome red, since that's what they're proposing.
Right. I don't see for its application, for example, the one that, the one that we got approved for Evans Landscape down on East Kemper, across from the water treatment facility there, they want to, they want to use it for a lot of different things. They're advertising a lot of different retail products there. So they're able to slide high-resolution JPEGs into, into the tile and send it out to the sign, so that they can show images of things on it that, obviously, the bank's not, that's not...
They're not going to be selling trees or strawberries?
No. I have a feeling that, a very good, well, everything we've got for them has been pretty much the same. But if this sign gets approved and goes up, we'll never be talking about this thing ever again.
I have another question. I haven't been on this board long. Is, I'm looking at the code, it looks like in the commercial districts, there's a minimum hold time of five seconds. Is that pretty standard, or is it standard for the board to increase that? I mean, has that been done before?
And is that for ground-mounted signs?
That, yes, the section that you're looking at is for retail ground-mounted signs. However, we do recommend those standards be added as conditions for any time that a sign gets added to a district where it's not allowed. Granted, it varies either this board, or the Board of Zoning Appeals, like the Evans sign. If a sign is granted where it's not allowed, we recommend those conditions, because those conditions only apply to ground-mounted signs in retail districts. So, and yes, that number has been debated all the time. Our staff recommendation is to stick with what the code says, that way we're always consistent. But it's been increased drastically in the past. I'll leave it at that.
And by understanding issue, is getting the digital sign on a building, on the sign of building, building mount?
Yes.
But that is not our code.
And it's currently not allowed on an office property at all.
So if they wanted to, they could take the existing box, put a, whatever this technology is, in the existing box, and it would be compliant, right?
A face change is yes, replacing, on a digital sign, we've liberally interpreted a face change to be if you leave the cabinet up, the outside, and you can just pull out the mechanics on the inside and put back new mechanics, and make that work inside the existing box, then that's a face change. Yes.
If that were physically possible, that might have been a direction we would go, but that's not really, that's not really an option.
Yes, we've discussed that many times.
So currently, what you're stating is, no office buildings allow this type of sign that they're proposing. If there was one in place prior to Sims Township taking over, that's sort of a grandfathered in.
Yes. Currently, they're not allowed on any building, in any district.
So by, if by chance, this gets approved, and any office building in Sims Township has a case to come forward to this board, the Board of Appeals, and that usher the legalities, to request this sign and use the approval, the possible approval tonight as their reason?
That is our concern with the precedent, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can I speak?
Absolutely.
If applicant...
I'm finished. Do you have any other questions for me?
I'm assuming you're part of the applicant, right?
I am.
Please state your name.
If he was an opponent, that would be really strange, wouldn't it?
Mike, I agree with you, but I know you two fought before, so I don't know. Your name is?
My name is John Meyer. I'm part of Ray Meyer Sign Company. Address 8942 Glendale-Milford Road, Loveland, Ohio, 45140. I just want to address the question that, or the thing that Brian said about no other sign is in the township that is on a building. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe is the Mike's Express Car Wash on Kemper Road part of Sims Township?
It is. They had, they do have a, they do have a digital board on their building that faces internally.
It's on the canopy, so, I mean, technically, that's a building-mounted type message center. So I just wanted to kind of bring that up. And I think that was approved through zoning, a zone change for that area?
Yes, those were by the township trustees.
Okay. So I just wanted to mention that. And also, I just wanted to bring up the fact, and I don't think anybody mentioned this, that the bank's been in Sims Township for a long time. I mean, they had their headquarters there, and I'm sure you guys are aware, they bought the two office buildings in Governor's Hill. They've made a pretty big commitment to stay in Sims Township. So I think maybe that might kind of look into the, or kind of pull into the whole equation as well. But, yeah, I mean, these signs have been there for so many years, we have no idea how they went up there. But the biggest thing I want to just bring up, the fact that he said, he said there was no building-mounted signs in the township, and there actually is, so...
Can you explain that, Brian, or...
Yes, there's a Mike's Car Wash down the street. They have, or not down the street, in a different part of the township. And they did get approval for, as you pull in, where you go up to order, you get in line to pick a lane, you order, there is a sign mounted on the canopy that is digital. Technically, he's right, that is a building-mounted sign. I wasn't thinking of it that way, because it's internal and it's on a canopy, but it is technically a building-mounted sign. It's Zone double E now, after the zone change.
And this one's Zone double L?
Yes.
That's a different zone, correct?
Correct.
And one other thing I want to mention, not that it means anything, but I've been on Board of Zoning Appeals for like the last 10 years, between Deerfield Township and now City of Blue Ash. And when you talk about precedents, you have to look at every case individually. So just because if you were to approve this, doesn't mean that anyone else is going to get a message center if they come before a board. So every case is looked at individually from any other case. So I don't see any reason why anybody would be able to come before you and say, well, you set a precedent for that. Well, they don't know what the reasons were, why you approved it or whatnot. So I think that it doesn't really hold weight that someone can come in and use that as a precedent.
Why did you mention Mike's Car Wash, then?
Because I was just refuting what he said about no building-mounted signs.
But you understand what my colleague is trying to explain to you is, the same argument that you're using tonight, we're going to hear maybe 30 more times in the next two or three years, is, well, Union Savings Bank, which is non-conforming, got their reader board signed.
Well, not technically, because they've been there for 20 some odd-plus years. So they're technically grandfathered.
Yeah, but if they understand what our code says, and our code says it's not permitted...
Currently, we can say the reason it's there because it's grandfathered. After tonight, we can no longer say that. Well, but it would be because you're modifying it. I understand that, but it's no longer grandfathered, it's our reason for saying...
Yeah, no one else can have that unique fact.
Exactly.
You're correct. So, I'm not...
Thank you.
I guess I, I'd like to go back to my question about the existing box and, you know, what could or could not be done inside that existing box. And you made the statement that technologically, it just won't work that way, which I understand. But could you put, you know, I mean, maybe I'm splitting hairs here, but could you put your new Watchfire system inside that box, and why not?
If you were able to see inside of the existing one, and even if you were able to take everything out of it, I mean, there's pieces that are welded, you know, trays that all kind of components are sitting on. If you were even actually able to get it completely cleaned out, Watchfire does not have a configuration that they would be able to make that would perfectly fit inside of the existing cabin.
And actually, the units that are up there now are completely different, they're not even a cabin, so there's not really a cabin that you could actually fit something within.
Brian, I recall we denied a reader board sign in another area, and it was immediately then appealed to Hamilton County. I think that's Royal Point Shopping Center.
Was that a reader board?
I'm not sure. I thought we, I thought they wanted to put a digital board up, and I think you approved the digital part, but required them to take the sign down eight feet or something like that. They would have to cut the poles off. I thought that was the issue, not necessarily the reader board. I'm pretty sure there was an approval that was appealed, not a denial.
So I'm going to, there's nobody else here, so we're skipping the rest of the, the rest of the public hearing, and it's late, so I'll close the public hearing, but we are availed, you are availed to questions, continued questions. So we've closed the public hearing. Are there any other questions that you all have for either the applicant and the applicant's consultant, or Mr. Snyder? None? Okay. Does anyone want to make a motion at this point?
No discussion within us?
We could do it now, or we could make a motion and then discuss that, or whatever you, whatever you... I'm open, I'm open at this point for suggestions. We could have, we could have the discussion now, if you'd like.
I don't have a very strong feeling either way on this. I also don't know the history of kind of the signs you've reviewed, and if this is in line, you know, I kind of feel for them, that it's...
So none of this, in this particular case, none of these properties have come before us? None of these signs have not come before us on this particular property?
Yeah.
I tell you, I mean, I came in today with my expectation that I was not going to be in favor of this, you know, based on the information that I read previously. But I also feel like they're doing everything they possibly can to maintain conformity with the existing sign. And I sympathize with them that they've got archaic technology, that they're trying to do the best they can to replace in a consistent manner with which they are currently operating. So, I mean, the fact that it's monochromatic, that it's going to be a red and black sign, that it's not going to be scrolling and flashing and all the other conditions, I guess I'm okay with that. But I also am troubled by creating a new precedence. And the fact that, once we open that Pandora's Box, we can never close it. So, I don't know. I mean, I'm not making a motion either way, I'm just stating my points, but I think that's kind of how I feel.
Are we aware of any other existing non-conforming built, wall-mounted electronic sign?
I am not.
I mean, if there aren't any other existing conditions like this, it doesn't really set a precedence that this is, this would be a unique situation of it being a non-conforming wall sign that's just getting modernized. And I agree, I don't think we want to open it up... And I agree, I don't think we want to open it up to, you know, every office building having a electronic sign, but I do see this one as a little bit of a, a unique situation. And like you said, that if they're kind of just modernizing what they already have, that we're not taking away something that they've used for 20 years. I don't know, just a thought.
What's unique about it is the zoning's incorrect.
The zoning was different.
Because, great, it, I mean, it screams for retail zoning, okay? And that's what the, that's basically what the owner has looked at it as a retail location, and is treating it as a retail location, but under a zoning that is not retail zone. That's, that's really the, why we're at this place at this particular time. And we are a board, and things come before us, and, you know, we can easily say if we like, hey, we do things based on specific pieces of property, specific aspects, and we can say no, and, you know, "Oh, you did it for these guys down the street, but you're not going to do it for me?" Yep, we're going to do that. So we can, we can handle that as a board. So, those are, those are my thoughts. If we move forward, what I would like to see is, I would condition this in a way that we're going to feel comfortable with it.
I agree with whatever we can say, and I just really struggle when the applicant referred to another piece of property as wall sign, and then we had to defend it.
Any comments, Greg, or would you like to be, remain silent?
No, I, I think the code needs to be modified, because that's our, our position. And LEDs, I understand is the future, or any better, and we're just going to call it point in time, maybe in my lifetime, where the LED looks like a, a life sign, and you just can't tell the difference. LEDs provide flexibility, and you get it from the business, you know? But I just feel somewhat confined with respect to the zoning and the presets and everything else, so I don't have a clear answer on that yet. I struggle with it, I struggled with it before I came here, and now I'm struggling with it. But, you know, I, I guess what I have to do, that's my default.
Okay. All right, so I'll circle back around and ask, does anyone want to make a motion? And the motion could be a motion to approve, a motion to deny, or a motion to approve with conditions. Anyone want to take a stab at it?
I can do it. All right, I would like to make a motion to approve the proposed signage, I don't think there's a, with the condition that the sign is monochromatic with two colors, and that there is, that the, oh, let's see, I'm looking, I'm looking at the, the commercial requirements.
So, to, the commercial requirements, I would say are 321.5-2, 5, 6, and 7, because 1 through 4 don't apply to building signs. Actually, currently, there is no 6, but there will be shortly, and I would suggest that you include that one, it's the one about photo dimming, or auto dimming photocell.
Because I just have 1 through 6.
Right.
Okay, so it's going to be 1 through 7?
5, 6, and 7.
Okay.
So 1 through 4 don't apply to building signs. If you read it, it's 10 feet from the right away, 10 feet from the property lines.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, and that the sign complies with Section 321.5-2 subsections 5, 6, and 7? I think that's all. And does the application specify the size, or do I need to say that?
Um, no, the application does specify the size.
Okay, so I don't need to specify that, okay.
I would just maybe modify your, to, to specify red, monochromatic red.
Red, monochromatic.
Yeah.
We have a motion on the table, do we have a second? I'll second the motion. Do we have a discussion? Any further discussion? Sounds like we're ready to go. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Reichman?
Yes.
Mr. Etter?
No.
Mr. Kessler?
No.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen?
Thank you.
So, do we have any old business? None? Any new business? Kim? No new business?
My delivery of meetings.
So we have a meeting now on June...
We, we got another application too, so.
Oh, good.
We will be on vacation next month, so.
June, June what?
15th.
June 15th, okay. I think I will be here.
Any progress on McCluskey, or is that still?
I will not be here. Um, I heard, I heard today that McCluskey is not tearing down the retail section, the small shop retail section.
That's what he started with, and then he decided he was going to, so that...
I heard today, he's leaving all those tenants in there, and not turning, and not tearing that section down, but then, then modeling the, the big, the Big Penny, J.C. Penney building.
Does he have to come back in front of us? Is that the final development plan?
Yeah, that's, that's also to hear approval. Bring it on.
Darn.
Wait, so we? Get another bite of the apple?
I bit hard.
Well, don't miss that meeting.
They might want me to miss it.
So, I will, I will not be here June 15th.
We can close the meeting.
Kim? Yeah, we've closed.
We don't have a motion.
Can I have a, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second that. All favor.
Aye.
Kim, I will not be here June...